I'll call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. City Council sitting at the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. And we will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Mayor Cabralis, I do need to add an item to this agenda. It is a additional closed session, and it would have to be added pursuant to Government Code 5495-4.2B2. It is a matter pertaining to threatened litigation. I think the city manager today received correspondence from a law firm indicating a threat to basically initiate litigation. I'd like to discuss that with you. We'd need a motion to add that. It would be threatened litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9. The motion needs to include that the item arose after the posting of the agenda, and per the terms of the letter from the attorney, they're looking for some immediate steps to be taken, so we have an immediate need to discuss that item.
A move stated by the city attorney? Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to go individually on each item?
The items that are on the agenda are all fully listed there. To the extent that there is any reportable action, we will come out and report that action at either the end of this closed session or at the beginning of the regular agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville, the City Council sitting at the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. We did have a closed session?
Yes, Mayor Cabralis. We did not get through all of the items listed on the closed session, but those items that we did, there was no reportable action. That meeting was not yet adjourned, so with respect to items number four, sorry, three, four, five, six, and seven, I would tell you I do not really need action immediately on five, sorry, four, five, six, or seven. However, we do have consultants that are necessary for those closed session discussions on item three, so it's your pleasure whether or not to reentertain those items at the end of this regular session, or you could adjourn at the end of this regular session and adjourn to next Tuesday night, making that a regular meeting for all intents purposes, and consider them at that time. So it's really your pleasure.
I would like to hear from the council members what their...
Yeah, if we could adjourn to next Tuesday, that'd be fine with me.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Well, if that's the consensus of the council, I'm not opposed to it. I would have preferred to do them tonight. We've brought people from some distance to come up here, and consensus is to do it weekend.
Well, I think in that case, if we have people that have been here for a while, I think we should do it tonight.
That's fine. That's fine. I can do it.
Then we'll just get through the regular agenda. There's no need to adjourn it. There's been no reportable action to the extent at the end of the regular session. We'll go back into closed session, and if there's anything reportable at that time, we'll come out and report it.
As customary, we'll have our invocation, and that'll be given by Dr. Jesse Giddens from Pastor of Destiny Church, Christian Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our Chief of Police, Captain Reynolds.
If we would bow our heads for prayer. Gracious God, our Father, once again this night, oh God, we come as our city officials, as business owners, as the people of this city. We come, Father, and once again, before we begin, we acknowledge you, and do invoke and invite your presence into this meeting, and into this time of decisions in businesses, and of business that would govern our great city. Father, we ask for your direction and guidance. We ask for your instruction, God, and we ask for your wisdom. I thank you, Father, for each and every city official and those who have gathered here tonight. I pray, Father, that with your divine help and with your presence here, that you would in some way help us to come to a means, to come to decisions, to come to directions, and to come to a place in which the position of our city would be better because of our gathering here tonight. Father, we thank you, and do ask for your protection and for your promise to be released upon this city. The Father, as we would come together and acknowledge you, that you promised that you would direct us, and that you would even teach us in the way that we ought to go. Father, we acknowledge that not only our state, but as a city, Father, we acknowledge that we're in need, God, of help. We're in need of leading. We're in need of instruction. And we know, God, the highest power that there is, even higher than our president and higher than Congress, Father, is Almighty God, he who has the power to lift up and to set down. And so, Father, as we begin tonight, once again, I just thank you for just protection. I thank you for our civil authorities. I thank you for those who work so hard to protect and to keep the citizens of our city and the surrounding areas safe from harm. We pray your covering, Father, that you keep them as they patrol the cities and do their job to protect us and help us to lead a life of peace and a life of prosperity even in this time. Father, before we even go further, we want to say thank you for all that has been done. Thank you for the sacrifice that these leaders give of their time and of their talents, Father, to serve this city in the manner in which they do. And then we thank you for we, the people, God, who come together to help, literally to assist, to aid, and to put our part and do our part in making this place a better place for our families, for our children, for grandchildren, for all of those of this city and community. And, Father, for all of these things, as you are here together with us, we want to give you thanks and give you honor in Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Tonight, it's a special night. We're honoring one of our own employees that has returned from Iraq and Kuwait. And so, we'd like to call on a second-class petty officer, Dean Nicolopoulos of the United States Navy. Nick? Correct. Dean. Dean has been a city employee for three years in the information services, as an information services technician. Dean spent ten months in Iraq and Kuwait, and for us, we were there when you left, and we welcome back. Dean left last September in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. So, Dean, we welcome you back. You're in good shape, and you're getting ready back to go to work. Thank you. We do have your banner. Help me with that. This is the banner that flew when one of our vendors joined his tour in Iraq and Kuwait, and now Dean can have this back, and please place it someplace in your home where you can remember that we do recognize our veterans in our military, and thank you for your service.
It's been a pleasure. Yeah, I left last year in September, left my family, family here. It was kind of a tough time, never been out there before. A little difficult leaving the family and leaving work, and, you know, sure is hard on these guys, because one less person now, so. It was an interesting experience. Had some good times, had some bad times. Learned a lot of things, so hopefully I came back better man, better father, better husband, and hopefully a better employee to everybody. Just want to thank everybody for your support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your support.
Thank you.
The council members, you, Mr. Cox. So, thanks, everybody. The care packages were great that they sent out. They really helped a lot. I miss home as well, so I just want to say thanks. It's an honor.
Welcome home. Thank you.
I do have this flag that I've flown. I'll read the certificate. This is the certify that the United States flag was flown by the Seabees of S-43 at Camp Arifjan, Kuwait, on this fourth day of July, 2009, in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. This flag represents our dedication and steadfast devotion to duty in the fight against global terrorism. This flag is presented to the City of Victorville. At the request of CM-2 Dean A. Licadopoulos, USN, this flag was flown in your honor and is presented to you on behalf of the men and women of the Armed Forces of the United States and the United States Navy Seabees.
Thank you, Dean. Back to your home, safe, and back with your family, and of course, we look forward to seeing you back to work. Thank you. And I would like to call on Ryan McCaffrey to come out and join me in the front.
I asked Ryan how much he had to pay to get that.
Ryan, you were part of a winning team, and maybe you can tell us a little bit about what happened. And I think somebody should put a video picture. There you go. There's the winning team. Let's hear it for him.
Yeah, the Apple Valley Chamber challenged the cities of the High Desert to a golf tournament challenge between the City of Victorville, Sperry, Apple Valley, and Atalanta. Unfortunately, the City of Victorville and the town of Apple Valley were the only two that participated, but it is my understanding that we really beat them bad, and as much as they really did not like departing with their own trophy, they did give it to us, and we're going to figure out a way to replace this apple with our logo up there. But, yeah, but we did enjoy it. It was not paid for with city money, so we want to make sure everybody knows that out there. We paid for it individually, so. But did have a good time with our city manager, Jim Cox, and Economic Development Director, Keith Metzler, and our risk manager, Chuck Bouquet. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Congrats, everyone.
I didn't mean city money.
No city money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Cox, members of the community. I have a special introduction I would like to make to you so that we can give him an official City of Victorville welcome. We have the pleasure of having with us, riding out with County Fire for three months, Adrian from the Netherlands. He is a battalion chief with the Netherlands. He has been with us for three months. His specific mission, he came here to learn a little bit about how we manage and how we go after wildland fires. And it's kind of interesting talking to him. In the Netherlands, it is a small country that's very green, so my first thought was, well, what burns over there? But he assured me that they do have, in fact, wildland fires in the Netherlands. And in fact, it's kind of interesting that it's been drying, the climate has been getting a lot drier there, so what they have noticed is an increase in the wildland fire activity, where predominantly they used to get fires in the grass during a short period of time. Now it's getting into the grass, and it's spreading to the forest. So it's something new for them. It's a new challenge. So through an internship, he has come here to California, and specifically County Fire. He's rode out in the valley, and of course, now he's riding out with the best, and of course, that's Victorville. So we're glad that he's here, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to welcome him and have him say a few words. I wish I could say his last name and tell you what city he's from, but I don't know how to pronounce it, so I'll let him do that.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome, Adrian.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, as the chief said, my name is Adrian. I will try to pronounce my back name. I do it in Dutch. My name is Adrian Terghurne. I'm from the eastern part of the Netherlands, just five minutes close to the German border. And as the chief said, I'm here for wildland fires, but I have two more assignments for my county back at the Netherlands, and that's also to look at the communications in the field, so the ICS system, how the communication between the field and comm center is, and when the EOC is started, how that function. And the third thing is I have to look at the mass plan from the mountains, the evacuation plan. We will use it for another purpose. We have a lot of floodings in the Netherlands, but I'm here to look at that, so I'm happy to be here and happy that the County Fire Department provides me all the chances and to ride with them, so thank you.
Well, welcome, and I hope you stay as...
Just a side note, his wife is also a battalion chief in the Netherlands, and she's expecting their first baby in January, so you better get home.
Well, welcome, and I hope you stay as, you learn a lot, and you have a good time here with our firefighters. Has he, he hasn't been involved in your wildland fires yet, has he?
You know what? Actually, he has. He's been here for several months already, so he, in fact, has already been with some of our battalion chiefs. He went to the Los Padres Fire in Santa Barbara area, so he was there for that. He also went as a liaison and rep for the fires down in Yucapa recently. And also, he's a witness to how devastating the wildland fire picture is in Southern California, and was witness to the station fire, of course, where tragically two firefighters lost their lives. So he was a witness for that. And, you know, he'll be going with us to the memorial service tomorrow, so he's going to go back with a lot of memories, experiences, and we're really trying to make him feel welcome in Victorville. His chief actually even sent him and said, "I expect you to work while you're there." So he's got his gear with him. He's actually riding on the fire engine. He's staying in the firehouse, and he's got full authority and authorization to participate in everything we do. So we put him to work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have our public comment, and we have Joe Vale.
Public comment was going to be for the railroad meeting logistics, but I'll ask the question anyway. We have a very lovely railroad bed in place. Is there any chance there's going to be a railroad rail ever put there?
Dorothy Miller?
Mayor and council members, Dorothy Miller. I watched the council members' videos. I have some questions. I thought VV-2 was for sale. It don't sound like that. I feel the city attorney should have been fired for not stopping the consent item that would have allowed selected council members and others to have carte blanche at SCLA. That would have been a ripoff to people in the City of Victorville. When will the eucalyptus and 395 be paved? I hear a lot of promises, and I'm hoping it's in the budget this time. It was in before, and it's gone, and I hope and pray it's in there this time. I see a lot of stuff going on. I hope the grand jury gets to the bottom of it. No Riverwalk. We don't need no Riverwalk. Audit. You still haven't covered up enough? We still haven't got an audit. We have a lot of promises, lies to the people. I don't think that's right. I feel we should go bankrupt and get rid of all our good old boys that is getting benefits from all this. The park, we have a beautiful park in the Golden Triangle, and I am so proud of that park, and we had a very good grand opening there. And I think people that weren't there should really take a trip out there and take a look at it. Take a look at the eucalyptus, too, because I love that street not through. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. There's one statement you made that I, we need to respond to that. We do have an audit. Yes. But we're not going to discuss it. I just wanted to respond to you.
When is it going to come out?
It's already out, and somebody will give you a copy.
Thank you.
Tom LaFortune?
I just think I first told him.
Sorry? Okay. I'm the same way. Tom LaFortune? LaFortune?
Hard one. I have here is a account of your investments for the City of Victorville and how good you've done, if you want to believe that. Now, if you want, I can have these printed up, and each one of you hang this in your office, and every time you start feeling smug and smart, read how much you buried the city, and you keep continually doing it. Right here alone, $247 million, and got nothing out of it. Do you really know how to run a city? I don't think so. I think what the woman said is right. The grand jury needs to come in here, get Roberts back from Colorado, and get to the bottom of this, and see how many other people scatter and leave town. You people have nothing to be smug about. You're disgusting.
Thank you. We'll now go into the Library Board of Trustees. The first item is, well, no revisions to the agenda. We do have a consent calendar.
Approval?
Second. We have, next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and also the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and Chairman Caldwell will do those two agendas.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. Item three is the consent calendar.
Approval?
Item four is a request to receive and file the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority Basic Financial Statements for 63008, and that is a companion item on the following agenda, which is the airport. I would handle those two together.
Cool. Second.
Go back to item three, which is the consent calendar. Motion would be in order.
A move.
Request to approve a $10,000 loan from the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Bear Valley Road Project Area Fund to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. This is a companion item to RDA Agenda Item Four, if you want, Mr. Mayor. I'd handle it currently.
Yes.
Lot of agreement by between Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Southern California Logistics Airport.
Yes.
Ten million.
Ten million. I just dropped three zeros.
Okay.
Motion would be in order to, motion would be... Have a card on it? Wait a minute, is there a card? Have a card on that item? Norman Miller?
Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller, and I just want to mention one thing real quick, is that I can sure hear people talking on this microphone. We don't hear you talking on the other microphones. Question I have on this, actually, is on this item and also the one on the water district. It's the same thing as the $20 million, $20 million loan that you want to make to the SCLA. My questions are on page 83 on your agenda. And I'm not a specialist in this. I'm only a taxpayer, and my only question is, and this is both on the water district and the RDA or SCLA, the loan is necessary to fund prior years' capital improvements and redevelopment project expenses. Does that mean you've been taking money from Peter to pay Paul, and now you have to pay Peter off? How come this money has already been used, and now you need the money for it? That's one question. The other question is on page 87, I believe it is. Sorry, I've got too many papers here. Basically, what it says, it's the repayment obligation of SCLA is hereunder shall be subordinate to any other interim or permanent financing of the SCLA. Does that mean that the loan doesn't get paid back if there's more important loans to be paid? Why is it subordinate?
Mr. Miller, I'm going to ask Keith Metzler, our director of the Redevelopment Agency, to address those issues. Mr. Metzler?
Then my last question is, I don't know how much of this money came from the Baldi Mesa Water District on the water loan, but that sure could have been used a lot to pay off our debts that we now have to pay yearly for our standby fees. Why couldn't some of that money have been used for paying off the standby fees? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, to answer the first question, I think it's applicable to both the water district loan as it is to the RDA's loan. It's more to bring the, from an accounting perspective, to bring the fund balances back into line. As you're probably familiar, we've allowed a lot of the fund balances from the accounting perspective to go negative, so it's been advised to us to help reconcile the fund balances and bring them closer to where they need to be, that loans would be in place or need to be in place from entities that actually do have positive fund balances, cash on the books. I can tell you from the RDA's perspective specifically, we have done cash flow models. I do cash flow models 24 months out, and we have determined that the cash from the Bear Valley Project area to make this loan is there, it is adequate, and it doesn't, we don't foresee a negative impact to our ability to continue to operate as a Bear Valley Redevelopment Project area. To answer the second question, it's more of a legally-natured answer, and large part it has to do with our larger indebtedness. SCLA has a lot of debt on the books, and as you know, it is a creature of debt for it to continue to issue debt to fund necessary improvements. That's language that we would traditionally be required. In fact, we do it in a lot of our loan agreements, interfund loan agreements, where we allow the subjectivity of the interfund loan agreements to be subordinate to any senior debt obligation. So it's more from a larger municipal finance perspective as to why we put that language in there.
Questions or comments from members of the authority for Mr. Metzler?
Mr. Metzler, you're not, redevelopment fund is not a restricted fund. Is it considered a restricted fund?
It's a legally-restricted fund. It's an enterprise of its own. It operates as a separate legal entity and does, acts, carries out separate legal purposes.
Okay. And in this, you also have a... And in this, you also have a, a note saying that the loan will be repaid?
Correct.
While you're, it's not just for you, but while we're talking on the subject of both this and you brought up the Water District, I know that's a restricted fund. I'm a little concerned taking from restricted funds with these notes and the payments. I, not being an attorney or an accountant, I am a little concerned and I would like to see if Andre and Mr. Cox and Doug has really looked through all this and made sure that everything we're doing is legal. And we, I really would like to know who's going to be responsible? This has to be paid back in five years, max, with interest? Who's going to be responsible for making sure that this money is paid back to these restricted funds with interest?
Correct.
The five of us may not be here if I, well, I'm not jinxing anybody, but we may not be sitting here to make sure these things come back. And I'd like to know if this is going to be on the audit? When we get our audit and the finance every year showing that this loan still exists and what the fund balance is?
Well, I can...
Let me answer that. We've been through this because when we began, when we ended the last audit and became, became, began with the new audit, the auditor wanted to see the loan agreements to make sure that we had accounted for the funds so that they could be shown as payable or receivable. And that the restricted funds that are restricted to a particular use can only be expended by authorization of the City Council. And they, there have always been journal entries at the end of the year to payback funds or to borrow funds as a part of the ongoing, doing business, part of ongoing business. I think that most people familiar with governmental entities know that income for a city is literally nothing. July, August, September, October, November, December, you get the first tax payments in. And primarily, the most part of the redevelopment funds, tax monies and so on come in after January, January through June. So it's very common to have loans through that period of time. And then you have the journal entries that make the corrections. Auditors are more and more looking at that if it is from a, from a restricted fund or if it's a carryover, that that fund which is restricted, such a loan should have some assurances that it is going to be paid back rather than the staff doing it during the fiscal year. Especially if it goes beyond the fiscal year, it has to be shown in the audit as receivable. Because it is investment of the restricted fund, it has to draw interest. And the interest has to be shown in a document that's a loan agreement that can only be approved by the legislative body. And then that becomes a part of the budget process and becomes a part of the audit process. And it's mandatory that this be paid back and be shown. So each year, the audit will show how much is received and how much is still receivable. And then what the payables are from, where the money comes from and what's continued to be paid. There is a responsibility of staff in putting together the budget to show all of these figures and a responsibility of the auditor. And believe me, they will look at that to make sure that we're complying with the loan agreements that have been, assuming you approved this, but the loan agreements that have been approved by the legislative body. And so each year or anytime there's a budget review, these documents are referred to, there's a full disclosure, and the council is continually reminded of the amount that's loaned. Staff can't do that, only the council can. How much is paid annually and when the deadlines are to be paid. And if there is anything that changes that, it must come back to the City Council. So, you know, it falls in the category of, that you have a contract liability. You have to meet those. And there's several penalties actually that the city would incur if we didn't comply with those. And they will be complied with. If not, it comes back to the council, a full public disclosure on why it wasn't paid and the circumstances and alter, alternative motions that the council can make to assure that the public dollar is protected.
The only reason I bring that up, Mr. Cox, is a few years back, when I first became a councilman, we had a $5 million loan from a restricted fund and was shown every, every audit being paid to that restricted fund and the next day pulled back as a loan. This went on for many, many years. I wish I could remember how many. But in the long run, the bottom line was that this loan was never paid. It was forgiven.
It should, well, I don't want to speak...
I don't want to, I'm just saying that the reason I'm asking these questions is that reason.
Very good questions. And that, I'll assume that if there were similar kinds of loan from restricted funds, it should have been accounted for, it should have been paid. It should not have been forgiven. And I, you know, if there's a problem, I'll be more than happy to look into. If there's a question on any of these past actions, I'll be more than happy to look at it. We are making a lot of corrections. And we are doing our best to make sure that we are in full compliance with all rules and regulations that govern municipalities. If we're not there, we certainly are getting there and we will get there.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Metzler from members of the authority?
Just have a, I say recall, Mr. Cox, the audit required, that was one of the recommendations that, that we do this?
These, these are, we have long discussions with the auditors in regard to, when they begin to ask questions in regard to our procedures, we make sure that we are in full compliance. And if we had come up with restricted funds where the cash balance did not meet the fund balance because the money had been expended and we did not have a loan agreement in place, the auditors would be standing here bringing to your attention that there is a discrepancy that's very serious that should be corrected. And so we take very serious the recommendations of our auditor in going through our books.
Further? Thank you, Mr. Metzler.
For approval of the loan?
Your second?
Second.
That concludes the Airport Authority Agenda. Mayor?
Of five?
He took care of five concurrently with the rail authority.
We'll now go into the Redevelopment Agency Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before you get to the consent calendar, I must declare a conflict of interest on item three C1 as I do business with Griner Pontiac Buick.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mr. McEckern, your vote then does not include that item, is that correct?
Correct.
Next we have item four.
Already took care of that, Mayor.
Item number five, to request to approve an agreement by and amongst Signatures B.C. LLC, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Bank of America, terminating construction and permanent loans pursuant to the MOU for the Signature Valley Center Multifamily Project.
Move approval?
Second. Second?
Item six?
Took care of item six.
Victorville Water District? Consent calendar?
Move for approval?
Second.
Gabrielles, may I get a vote from you on that item?
Item number four? To request to amend the service provider agreement with Woodward and Karan to add two additional tasks to their assigned design services scope and increase it not to exceed amount by $56,515 regarding the SCLA Industrial Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Move approval?
Item number five, to request to approve a promissory note of $20 million between the Victorville Water District and the City of Victorville Municipal Utilities. This is a companion item to City Council Agenda Number 10. So we'll take both of them together. I do have a card from Norm Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My question on this was similar to what the last one I asked is, why the money is being brought out now when it was apparently used before? But the main thing again is, why is all this money coming from the Water District when it should be going to paying off the standby fees? I feel at least the money that came from Baldy Mesa ratepayers. Because what you're basically doing now is you're saying that the ratepayers have to pay for the SCLA stuff because you're taking our money to pay this off. Now you say it's going to be paid back in five years, but again, we've heard that before too. Thank you.
Item number five, is your motion?
Move for approval? Second.
Next we have the City Council Agenda. We have no revisions to the agenda. We do have a continued public hearing. Item number three. I would like to open up the public hearing on item number three. This is continued public hearing called here arguments for or against introduction of ordinance number 2239 and the adoption of resolution number 09046. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three?
Mayor, council and staff, good evening. Thank you for doing what you guys are doing. It's a very hard road right now. I was primarily here to speak on item four, but when I started reviewing your little over ream of paper agenda for this evening, I noticed this, this item here. And I'm, I'm not speaking to any one fee increase in here, but more out of a, more of a global concern of the image and the tone that this increase is going to give out to the public, to outside businesses wanting to come to this city. I realize that staff has done a lot of work putting together a very comprehensive analysis on, on our fee schedules being lower than other cities and other areas. But my concern is, is not saying that these fees aren't warranted, but the timing of the fee increase maybe not be appropriate. I think our city right now needs to work to expand businesses as much as possible, employ people as much as possible and bring new businesses here as much as possible. And by the council endorsing the staff's suggestions on these two items for these fee increases, you're basically telling the people and the business owners that we're raising fees. Even though we're in the worst recession since the Great Depression, we don't care, that we are just going to raise fees and, and that's the way it is. You drive around Victorville and you go to any business, including our business, we employ 48 people in the city. We have cut costs everywhere we possibly can. We dropped our fees to our clients. Every restaurant, every business in town has got two-for-one specials. You know, it's, it's out there and people are aware of what's going on. And for the council not to recognize that and pass something like this, I think just sends a really, really bad image and tone at this time. I would feel it better that you recognize that, yes, we do need to raise some fees and this could raise a few dollars for the city. I realize that with our lawsuits and our loans, that we do need money as well in the city. But maybe take a look at this and table it for 12 months to wait for a better time when the economy's better, that it, that these fee scheduled increases go into effect. Again, as I just, I lived in the city for almost 20 years. And, and right now, I think the city is really hurting. You know, we deal with renters, we deal with business owners and our property management business, and I can see what's out there. And if there's any negative tone that's being put out there to slow down growth, expansion or new businesses, I think it's something the City Council really needs to think about not endorsing at this particular time and looking at maybe doing it when the economy's a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Joe Vale. I didn't know what this ordinance was until this gentleman started speaking about it. However, I have a couple of suggestions that might help the city of Victorville to do something about their financial dilemma. One of those things would be to cut the employee staff within the City Hall. I've been here on several occasions. And almost any occasion, you can find several of the employees being paid for by us taxpayers, standing around having a very nice time. Not much work being done. And then they go on coffee break and not much else is being done. When you drive down the, through the town, you see Public Works people. The other day, I was here on Seneca or Mojave, Mojave. And there were three guys standing alongside the road, head cones set out. And they had to have been there for over half an hour doing nothing. So when you look at what happens in the city with hour dollars that are being wasted, then you want to raise fees on such as this? It makes you wonder. Our golf course, beautiful new clubhouse at the golf course. Then it's my understanding that all the city big shots get to play golf at my golf course for free. And I got to pay. Another suggestion would be, you guys pay to play for golf, just like everybody else, and cut out the freebies that us taxpayers are paying for. This is not your kingdom. This is our city, needs to be taken better care of.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Is your name and address?
Yes, she has my card.
Card for this item?
Yes.
For item three?
We're talking about the sewer rate increase?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Item three, anyone wishing to speak for or against? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And I would like to get a report from our, from Bill Webb, our Development Director.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to clarify one issue. There wasn't a statement in the press this morning, and this is not about development impact fees. Development impact fees are completely different. Those are, those are regarding the impact that development has on roads, on infrastructure, on public facilities. Those have been dealt with time and time again by this council. So you're all very familiar with those and the difference between those and what I'm about to speak about. What I'm speaking about are the development department fees, which include planning entitlements, engineering fees within our department, and building permits. And approximately two years ago or so, we brought on a consultant, Maximus Financial Consultants Services. And they have been preparing, working diligently with the project manager, associate planner, John Roberts, who's here, who may be answering any specific questions. Our consultant can be here tonight. But he knows the study in and out. And over the last year and a half or so. And what we've brought before you is the study and its recommendations and our recommendations. And they are, it's a multi-fold proposal that we bring before you. And I'll, I'll make it as, you know, I'll make it as brief as possible. And then if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer. Basically, we received the study and all of the information within it. And the study is a cost recovery analysis. It analyzes the amount of time and effort that the employees, the staff from the department and additional staff throughout the City Hall and operating costs to process, how much it takes to process. much it takes to process each project. It does not take into consideration, by the way, the number of employees any department has. It's the number of each individual secretary at the counter, planner, director, council, commissioners, et cetera, for the different levels of planning entitlements to start with, let's say. And that's the regular site plan, C U P, up through general plans and specific plans, et cetera. They've calculated all of these costs, they took the engineering process, the tentative tracks, MAFs, they took those costs, and they took the building process and took all of those costs and put forward recommendations. We have taken the recommendations, as you can see, following the report and following the amendments. There is a table with shaded columns, and those shaded columns represent our staff recommendation. As you can see from the tables, we have compared, we are showing you the existing fees for all of the fees that I've stated, the fee study recommendation, which would be a hundred percent cost recovery if there was no subsidizing of development or consideration of taxes paid for our services in this, and then surrounding cities, Apple Valley and Hesperia primarily, and some additional cities, in some cases Lancaster and Ontario, other similar, larger and growing cities. And we have taken a look at those, staff has taken a look at those, I've personally looked at those, and evaluated the fee study recommendation versus what we're paying and the surrounding cities, and recommended a fee that is within the range and, for the most part, lower than the surrounding cities in order to be, still be competitive and of equal comparison, including Apple Valley's recent lowering of their C U P, ours, our recommendation is still lower than that. As you can see, there was a big gap, and just for an example, I'll mention the conditional use permit we have been charging since nineteen ninety-one, I believe, which is approximately when most of these fees were put into effect, both building and planning, almost twenty years, three hundred and fifty dollars, whereas Apple Valley until recently was charging over four thousand dollars and has reduced it to twenty-five hundred dollars. Hesperia charges twenty-one, twenty-eight, and then they add on cost recovery borne, which is an hourly rate for anything over that fee, so it may oftentimes go up, whereas Lancaster's over seven thousand and Ontario's over two thousand. So for instance, there, as I stated, staff recommendation is two thousand, which is below, well below the surrounding area and the area and down the hill, obviously, and well below the staff recommendation of almost three thousand dollars. We've taken a close look at everything from planning entitlements through engineering services and miscellaneous building permits, such as electrical, mechanical, et cetera, where we were previously charging in the twenties, I believe, whereas surrounding cities were charging a couple hundred dollars for each of those permits. Our recommendation comes in on those anywhere from generally ninety-five dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars, which is still relatively low compared to surrounding cities. When we got to, when we looked at, when we looked at the building, the cost of new construction and examined those figures, that was at the end of this study, we saw that there was a difference there that was greater, much greater than the surrounding cities on smaller construction, such as single-family and small businesses, and a decrease in fees much greater than what we were charging and surrounding cities on the big boxes. In talking to the consultants, my, I guess, my understanding, and not from the consultants, but in knowing what I know of their model, and have been working closely with it in our department and with the consultants for almost two years, my explanation for that is that there is no graduated calculation or percentage for upper management's involvement in the larger cases. And if you look at the senior staff, if you look at the commission, the council, the additional hearings, if you look at, for example, I'm sorry, and I'm talking about building construction, but I'm using what we're used to hear. If you look at the years that it takes to get something broken, you know, the ground broken and the larger structures put up, and the delays and the additional experts that we have to call out, whether they're traffic and the road system, everything that's involved in that, that we have to analyze during that process, it's a larger project and there's more upper management involved in that. The model that this agency uses takes the hourly, the additional hours of the line staff or the inspector, say, or the plan checker, and for every hour that they added their time on a larger building, they continue to only increase upper management at the same percentage of time. Well, that's fine on the other cases. It works fine on an electrical permit. How often does that change or go on over years? So my belief is that that wasn't the accurate model to use for the building of new, for new construction and TIs, basically, any new construction. I'm recommending that we stay with the valuation model that we have, and that is the shaded area. And if you can see that, it is lower for small business, mom and pop, and single-family developers, homeowners, and it graduates to the larger, to the larger buildings. Now, I don't have calculations for that, nor will I unless we undergo another model, but it's what we've been using for years, and it's similar in cost to the neighboring cities and yet still lower in fees. One of the reasons it's lower in fees, by the way, I believe Apple Valley uses this same valuation system, that they have adopted the nineteen ninety-seven administrative code. We're not going forward and requesting that at this time because it takes a lot of changes in our building code chapter that we're not prepared for because we didn't anticipate doing this until a couple of months ago. And so we're still, we're still requesting that we stay under the nineteen ninety-one administrative code for now, however, that we adopt the I C C current valuation system for, and I'm sorry, that's the International Code Council. Thank you, that's why, sir. International Code Council, and that we adopt, which the language is in there under the amendments, that we adopt their current, their current calculations and put them into our table that is currently existing, which will be a relatively small increase. And I say that in comparison to something like DIF fees. So there is a difference here of what we're asking and what we're recommending. We're recommending that there's an adoption of the fees proposed based upon the fee schedule for planning, engineering, and miscellaneous building permits. However, for all new construction, that we stay with our valuation system, yet adopt a process where it is increased annually according to the I C, the International Code Council table at the same time. And what that does, for an example, as you can see down throughout here, what it does is it increases the current cost of, say, a single-family home is currently fifteen hundred dollars in fees, and it raises it two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. As was stated earlier, there were concerns or questions about DIF fees, or I guess not earlier, but in the press, and the DIF fee for a single home is over eleven thousand. And that's what I mean by comparatively small. It's a two hundred and seventy-seven dollar increase for several years of not increasing the fees at all. Similar for commercial, it again has graduated, is smaller on the smaller buildings, much so than the study, and larger on the larger buildings, much so than the study. Let me get to the mechanisms real quick. Hang on. The way we're doing this is we're introducing new code language for the first half primarily of the miscellaneous permits and planning figures, or planning entitlements and engineering services, and it is to change the code to allow for the adoption of the recommended fees and then to provide for an annual increase or decrease depending upon, based upon, based upon basically cost of living that has been passed on to employees. If there's a cost of living increase of four percent, but employees only receive two percent, it'll automatically be adjusted at two percent. If there's a decrease of two percent at the time that it exceeds the fee recommended amount, if it gets to that point that it ever exceeds that, then it'll be automatically deflated, de-escalated. And this will all be done annually, when, annually at the time of September, or I'm sorry, July first, when the budget is adopted, depending upon what, what happens, based upon the cost of living index, which is what the study is based upon originally with salaries. And so there'll be no need to update those fees in the future. It will be ongoing, and this study will serve as, you know, as long as it lasts until somebody changes this. For the building, there is already a provision in the code that allows us to annually update the building, the valuation system that we have, we have just not done it. And so part of adoption of this is to inform you that if this is adopted, if this ordinance and resolution is adopted, that automatically the building fees similarly will be revised according with the I C C table, which is also based upon cost of living, cost of supplies, cost of labor in the building industry. And then I think that's, oh, and then there's one more piece. The last piece is there's also a provision in the code currently, this is separate, it's connected to them, that allows or actually requires staff to collect building permit fees upfront, and we have not done that. Plan, I'm sorry, not building permit fees, they're connected, plan review fees. Yeah, thank you. And plan review fees currently are collected at the time of permit issuance, and that has been a policy of this city for as long as anyone can remember, as a courtesy to the development community, which till recently may have worked fine, but recently has backfired on us numerous times. And the reason being that, well, what it pays for is you submit a plan for plan review, the plan checkers are paid by the city, and they're paid out of the general fund during weeks, months, depending on the project, of plan review. We're paying the employees. However, the money is not coming in. The time of permit issuance, they pay, and the general fund is repaid for the salaries. While recently, we've had up to seventy-five thousand dollars, we've had hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're still debating and that we've had to go out and collect from developers, some which have gone bankrupt and there's no way of collecting, some that have left town, some that are still here and not happy about us wanting to collect. And the reason, and what's happened is because of the economy, and this can happen at any time, it could be a bad situation for an individual developer. However, what's happened is that, in this case, due to the economy, they have let their permits, or they have let their plans expire. Their plans are sitting in our plan check room, waiting to be picked up. Some of them, some of them completely approved, approved plans, but they won't take them, and they let them expire, knowing that they still have to pay the cost, if we inform them, but they're either gone or they refuse to, or they say you should have collected upfront. We have been told more times than not, actually more times period, that we should have collected them upfront. This is something that we were, I was concerned about when the departments merged several years ago, but there wasn't an issue. There was no reason to bring it up, well, we did bring it up, but at the time, at the time, management didn't see it as an issue. However, now we've experienced it, we see what the problem is, and we're correct. It was easier then to take the fees at the end because the building size can change throughout the process and fees can change. What we prefer is to take the amount upfront and deal with either refunds or requesting additional fees at the time of permit issuance. That way, we'll never be stuck holding the bill again. And anyway, that is in the code, and if these are approved tonight, I would, we would initiate that immediately effective when the resolution and ordinance were effective and the fees were effective. If for some reason the fees or the resolution or the ordinance are denied tonight, I would still like the council to consider and give direction and give an okay, if whatever's necessary, to proceed with at the very least, asking for or collecting plan check fees upfront when the plans are submitted. So if nothing else, that's something that we feel is extremely vital to our processing and the working of this, of this organization. With that, as I stated, there are addition, there are the code amendments are just in order to make this work. As I said, I've given you the tables, you have the background information, and I apologize for the consultant not being here, and I apologize for the, having to email much of the back, much of the background information to you over the last week. But as soon as we got it, we got it to you in one form or another, either in paper or through email, so that you'd have a chance to review it if you have any, any questions. And with that, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions, comments from the council?
I got one. I didn't quite hear, a lot of study, I mean, that gives you a headache going through that book, but there's a lot of study on hands-on, who's dealing with the project at all the different levels and quantifying that fee because that's a real number, that's not a hypothetical, gee, I think we should take thirty percent or whatever. Those are real numbers with real people working from the city. But you mentioned the fifty-fifty ratio, and then you never qualified it again. You said, was that the same ratio in today, the management versus the rank and file and the?
No, the recommendation that we have here is not for building of new construction, let me say it the other way. Yes, we agree with the fee study for planning, engineering, for all of our recommendations for building miscellaneous services. For new construction, we're requesting that we stay with the valuation table and update it because we don't think that the model accurately shows the additional hours of upper management and city officials and their time that goes into a larger project. And so that's why we separated the two and we'd rather go with the valuation. I should note this, the fee study does state that they feel, that the consultants feel that it is harder to challenge, and you should know this, harder to challenge the first half, which is cost recovery and based on an hourly salary. However, the second half is not something new we're bringing forward, it is something that has been used, oh, time and time again throughout, you know, this was the original system, and it's something that we've continued using, and it's more in keeping with the surrounding cities. So that's our recommendation. The commission could, or the council, I'm sorry, excuse me, could decide to go with the recommendation of staff on the first part and the recommendation of the fee study on the second part. As I said, though, I don't believe that they escalate the upper management costs to the extent that they should in the fee study. So I would just recommend against it.
Questions, comments?
Well, Mr. Webb and your staff, working with the consultants, obviously have done a lot of work over the last two years, and it's unfortunate that we're in the times that we are and we're being asked to increase fees. I like a lot about your presentation, I think a lot of those things should be implemented, but increasing of fees in this current economic climate does not make a whole lot of sense to me. I'd like, I'd like in some way to be able to implement a lot of what you've proposed as well as the consultants have proposed without the increase of fees. That's just where I'm coming from.
But I think we should go ahead and ask and implement that one that Bill asked. Can I say we go ahead and approve that part now?
Right. My opinion is, I want, I think implementing everything that he's proposed with the exception of actually increasing fees would be appropriate. It would put into place the automatic trigger based upon cost of living and future years and that type of, that type of thing, but, but not adopt any increase of fees at this point in time. When this economy turns around, things are better. Had you probably proposed this to the city council that was sitting up here two years ago when the economy was good, there would have been, there would have been no argument about it. But from where I sit and where our economy is today, just the increasing of fees, I do have to agree with Mr. Lamson, sends the wrong message. And although we're much lower than our surrounding cities, I just want to be careful about the message we put out there.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that'll be my motion.
Can, can we do that with this ordinance, or do we have, we have to amend the ordinance? No? That would, the ordinance would establish?
The ordinance puts everything into effect. The recommendation would have to be to deny the ordinance and the resolution, and then afterwards staff direction to implement what is already implemented, which is the plan check, if that's the way, if that's the way the council chooses to vote. However, I must note that that does not put into, to affect an automatic increase. If we're talking about an annual increase, we're talking, and I must note, we're talking about an increase of two percent of three hundred and fifty dollars, which I would probably prefer bringing this back at some point than increasing the, or in a different, in a different package and presenting it into council than that, because that would be something we'd be tied to probably for a lengthy time. be something we'd be tied to probably for a lengthy time, uh, and, and the study only has so much of a life that it's good for. I wouldn't know how to get back there from, you know, get back here from there again, a year from now or two years from now. So i- in my personal opinion, it's, it's all or none at this time, with the exception afterwards of just a hand vote, to proceed with taking plan check fees upfront. And, and if, if council so directs, then we can go back and think of an, of a way to inflate over time, um, and still keep within the study, but I, um, I, it will be hard to go from three hundred and fifty dollars to two thousand over ten years, or ever get there, because by then the other cities will be four to six thousand. So I, that's the only problem I have. I would rather, I, I'm, I'm assuming, and I would have to speak with the city manager, but it might be that it should come back as a clean deal at some point, rather than try to, to artificially get there from here over numerous years. Um, I think-
Let me propose the following, Mr. Man, council. We, we understand that raising the fees sends a, maybe a, a bad message right now. Just some bullet points. There's never a good time to raise fees. Um, and you will have a number of people who will protest. If the economy changes, uh, raising the fee will stop the economy. They will go someplace else. If you're in the midst of a growth, raising the fee will cause the growth to stop and go someplace else. If you're at the bottom of the economy, as we are now, it sends a bad message and therefore people will go someplace else. There will never be a good time, there just isn't a good time politically and otherwise to raise a fee. We, we hear you. In regard to paying the permits fees and, and plan check fees not upfront, you in effect are loaning money to those individuals who are both serious and purely speculating. And we ought not do that. There are some fees that are so far out of line that we're charging hundreds and the neighbors are charging thousands, and that is even those extremes do not cause somebody to go to the other city to get their home occupation permit, conditional use permit, zone change, et cetera. But we hear you. So if, it, it's clear, I think, that the council isn't prepared to adopt the study, but we would like to have, we have a study that must be defended if you get challenged. And that's why we have the consultant and that's why we have the study, that once you adopt that, if it's challenged by individuals or groups, it does withstand that challenge. And over a period of time, because things change, conditions change, it may be, it might not stand up so well, we would recommend if you're not going to adopt the fees, that you do adopt that they pay the fees upfront as requested by Mr. Webb. And then secondly, that we at least bring back those that are so far out of line that they're not comparable and get those done. Even though they may look like huge raises in some instances, they really need to be corrected. The other ones, which is from a change of eighty-six dollars to eighty-five, by the way, some of these go down, not up, or they go from ninety-five to ninety-six fifty and on infinite items, those can be held in abeyance, they can set for a while, we can give those a few months. And when we do a mid-year budget review in January, we can bring this back at that time. We'll refine it more so that we can point out the obvious differences. We can start collecting the fees at the time that the requests hit the counter. And then those that are really out of line, they can drop those, we can bring those back to bring them in line and then hold the rest of it for six months for another review at the time we adopt the budget. That's, I think that would be a good compromise. That's not to say it's going to be increased in six months at all. Uh, in fact, probably it would not be any change in six months. I think it'll take longer than that for the economy to turn around. It's merely a review, but it's a promise, uh, to look at that. And then probably again during the budget, a year from now, you're going to be looking at it again, but when you get too much beyond that, uh, you have to go back and do another study. And then if the economy turns around, you're not in a position to raise the fee because you're doing the study and by the time the study's completed, you're going to decline again and it's not a good time. We've got to get ahead of the curve and we've got to get more reasonable and we do have to be competitive, but we do have to be aware of what, uh, the neighboring cities are, are doing so that we're, we are somewhat in line. And staff has done that. They have recommended where the, where the fee study recommendation looks severe, staff brought that down based upon what the competitive level needs to be. But we hear you. And so if we could, if we could offer the compromise, make sure that we change whether, when they file the permit, they have to pay the fee. We really don't need to be in the position of loaning money to individuals that are trying to get the plan checks so that they can peddle those, because you're really loaning money to a speculator. We, we've been under a lot of criticism and the way we do business, that we'll correct that and close that loophole. Secondly, we will bring back the obvious ones that need major changes now, so that we're not really out of line. It'll be a much smaller, uh, change, but we can do those. And then the major study, we will hold in abeyance until council is more comfortable that the economy is changing and we need to make the major, the change, the rest of it at that time. That's my recommendation.
Any other question? Thank you, Bill. Do we have a motion?
I believe the, um, public hearing is still open. You may want to close that first.
Okay, the public hearing, uh, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against item number three? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. And I would entertain a motion. Public hearing is closed. No, the public hearing is closed, sir. The public hearing is closed.
Mayor Cabralis, uh, I'll move the spirit of Mr. Cox's recommendation, uh, recognizing that, uh, it's going to have to come back in language that we're going to have to take a look at. I think the suggestion of not introducing proposed ordinance twenty-two thirty-nine and resolution, proposed resolution oh-nine oh-fourty-six tonight is embodied in the spirit of what Mr. Cox has suggested and that we would at the next council agenda, uh, have the specific language that would in fact be the action that the council would take. My motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
And I think it's a great idea that we do this every year during budget time, so we don't have to do this again.
Okay, moving on to item number four, public hearing. Public hearing called to hear arguments for or against introduction of ordinance number twenty-two forty-seven. And this is in regards to the, uh, revising the sewer user fees for, for Victorville. I do have, I'll, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. And I do have some parts and I'll call you in that order, that we receive them. Neil, uh, DeBaron?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Neil Prescott, Neil DeBaron Prescott. Uh, I'm a retired licensed civil engineer and I recommend that you do not adopt a sewer increase because technically the wastewater treatment facility is not an infrastructure facility. It's a wastewater treatment facility. It's, it's an energy user. However, when you tie the wastewater treatment facility to the landfill, you have a power generating plant. And it's possible to get the, uh, get this city out of the fiscal harassment that it is with energy. The Gulf Arab states do not have budget problems. They rely on energy. Energy you can sell, particularly also you have the main transmission lines from, uh, the Hoover Dam coming right through here to the west coast. So you have the transmission lines, you have the landfill. You can't produce, and with the addition of other methane generator units, you can't produce as much methane gas, which is natural gas, for Mayor Emeritus Caldwell's, um, hard work on the power plant at S E L A. So it is a recommendation that you send it back to the consultant for upgrading the wastewater treatment plant to an infrastructure facility. Because right now, you're going to spend three million dollars for a digester, you don't want to have that digester, because the raw sludge going to the landfill produces more methane gas. If you use a digester, all you're doing is flaring off the gas and heating the air above us. Secondly, you're going to a septic facility to receive sewage from the, uh, septic tank trucks. You don't need that, you don't want that. You want that material to go directly to the landfill. You want raw sewage sludge to go directly to the landfill. But the landfill is a dry landfill. So what you want is a half a million gallons per day from the sewage treatment plant to go to the landfill. And that's how you're going to get this city, by energy, at this time, using your wastewater treatment-
You have fifteen seconds left, sir.
Thank you. I'm finished. Uh, any questions?
I have no question, Mr. Prescott. I just would, uh, say that, uh, some of us, myself included, have been arguing for at least parts of the concept as you've just outlined it. What makes it difficult is that not, not everyone cares, uh, about those issues and unfortunately, the city of Victorville doesn't control the landfill. Uh, it's a, it's a landfill that's controlled by the county and it's used by everybody. I mean, all of the municipalities up here. But, um, you know, we're trying to find ways to, to bring everybody together, to pursue the kind of, uh, what I would consider to be forward-looking, uh, visionary-
Respectfully submitted it.
I'd like to finish. I, I didn't interrupt you, so I'd like to finish.
I'm sorry.
Um, but you have shared over time, your, your thoughts and your recommendations, and I've distributed those to other members of the council and the staff. And while we're not there yet, I'm hopeful, uh, that over time, there'll be enough understanding about the value of what you're proposing, that we'll make some headway, but we're not there yet.
With your permission, uh, Mayor may have a minute to answer.
I'll give you fifteen seconds.
Thank you.
Because we have the people.
Respectfully submitted, um, uh, Mayor Emeritus Caldwell, um, as a former chief assistant permit engineer for Caltrans in District Eight, I'm very familiar with permits. The city can get an encroachment permit and hasn't used the process, it's not knowledgeable in the process. You can get an encroachment permit on any government land, whether federal, state, city, or even another city. And so this was not pursued and you need this infrastructure. Now, I'm a retired civil engineer, I'm a member of Surt. Anytime you want to call me for a question, please do so.
Your time is up now, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Yvonne Mashat?
Good evening, council members. I'm here again to protest the increase in the sewer fees. Uh, as the gentleman so eloquently explained, we're in a terrible recession. To have an increase in the sewer fees or any of the utilities that are involved up here, um, is quite devastating to all of the homeowners up here. I'd like you to really take that into consideration and, um, maybe a year from now, it'll be a better time. This is not the time to increase anyone's utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne?
Thank you, Mayor Rudy. City council manager, Jim. Uh, no need to increase the fee and I'll give you two brief examples. Come home sometimes late, eleven o'clock. I go on La Mesa, I'm on La Mesa, I go past the Liberty Elementary School. The lawn on La Mesa, the water is on, it's pouring over the sidewalk and into the street. I have called the school department several times, they don't care. You need to go after the water wasters. And if you do that, and I have a list here that I'm going to give to Engineer McGlade, we talked about this earlier, if you go after the water wasters, you will have plenty of response, uh, no need to, no need to charge us, charge the water wasters. I'll give you just one more example, then I'm going home. Sometimes I go home on Luna and in front of one, four, two, three, eight Luna, there is a concrete dip in, that crosses the road. It's never dry. Water running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in that trough, that concrete dip. Everybody has to slow down when they cross that with their car or you might lose control. And there, I invite you anytime, call me, let me drive you around and show you. I see it all over the city. People wasting, putting water on their lawn that doesn't need it. The intersection of Topaz and La Mesa. A year ago, engineers dug it up and resurfaced it because the water was standing there and percolated into the ground and ruined it. It's ba, it's ruined again. Have to repave it soon again because of water. So consider, please, to go after the water wasters. If I can see it with my poor vision, I'm sure that the engineering department or code enforcement, whoever, can see the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gina. The person's responsible for enforcing that, they're here in the, in the audience and they'll take care of it.
Thank you very much.
And nobody here disagrees with your-
And by the way, Friday night is Rosh Hashanah. Happy New Year and a healthy New Year to everybody, please. We need one. Thank you.
Ben Lamson?
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, council and staff. Again, thank you for your, your work. Um, you know, I, I, I'm trying to get a grasp on how this, this, uh, water sewer issue works and the way I read this, it looks like it's a pass-through ordinance from WWRA and you guys just, if you don't pass it, basically the city subsidizes these costs, it looks like, between what WWRA passes. Um, I understand, Mayor, you're our representative for the city on WWRA. Um, I don't know if by not passing this, you can send a message back to the WWRA that our city and our, our people are not in favor of this increase right now, or maybe I should say that we're not in favor of the amount of the increase. Because they've chosen not to do these increases over years, they're now choosing to catch up on it and of course, the worst economic times and passing through over two years a fifty-four percent increase in our sewer bills. Um, Adelanto just tried to pass a four-hundred percent increase in their fees a few months ago. Um, we spoke to that and that did not pass over there. Um, they restructured it because we, we, they realized that apartment buildings were going to be negative cash flow, that the foreclosure could be greater, you're going to have more blight than good, um, trying to recoup your back fees that you haven't increased over time. Um, I would encourage you to vote no on this, um, type of, of increase right now to send that message, but of course, I don't want the city to encourage any type of costs. Um, the one issue that I, I mainly have a problem with on here, um, that maybe some of the council's not familiar with, is on page three ninety, there's a schedule of how they bill per unit costs. And, and you may not be aware that an apartment building, say a ten-unit apartment building, is billed ten individual units, just like a single-family residence is. Well, it's, it's, through studies, we know that less people live in apartments per person than in a single-family residence. A single-family residence consumes more water and it has more waste than an apartment does too. Plus, in a single-family residence, when you have a vacancy, you don't hook up water, so you don't have a sewer bill. In an apartment building, you can't turn water off unless you're individually metered, which most of the older construction properties are not. So if we're having a ten or twelve or thirteen percent vacancy factor, which we have right now, we're paying sewer fees on all of our vacant units. Even in a good market, you have a five percent vacancy just from people moving in and moving out and, and preparing units, where you're not using- and preparing units, where you're not using the sewer and those costs. So if anything, we need to send a message back to Victor Valley Water Reclamation that their schedule of charges should be based on a higher fee going to single-family residences and a lesser fee on the apartment building units. It's not fair to have a one-for-one ratio on that. So that's one recommendation I'd have. But I still would recommend sending back a no to these guys, because we need the rest of you councilpeople to help Rudy and to fight with WWRA. I know we're working on sludge agreements and all sorts of other things here with the city too, and it's just a mess. But we need to send a message to them that the fees, trying to recoup it all right now, is just wrong. We need to stage it over five years, over seven years. It's got to be easier, because I know it's going to really hit our businesses hard, plus some of our residents, it's a big increase on individual families as well.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
And your comments are well received, and when we get through with the public section or the speakers, we'll have Mr. Cox elaborate on why the need for the fee and so on. Russell Correy.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I echo this gentleman's concerns. As a developer of investment concepts, we have built and managed over approximately 946 apartment units in the city of Victorville. This increase will have a major financial burden on us. As an example, for 2009, if this fee goes through, it'll be approximately $42,600 slap to us. Next year, it will be an additional $42,350. That's $85,000 in two years for additional sewer fees. I don't feel that that's warranted at all. That coupled with the economy, a lot of people's mentality are, oh, you're in the apartment business with foreclosures. That means everybody's racing to rent apartments. That isn't true at all. What we're finding is tenants are moving out, or they're doubling up, they're moving back home, and then we have investors buying the foreclosures and actually going to our apartments and taping on our doors. Why live here when you can rent a single-family home for less money? We can't absorb fees like this, and I ask that you take it back to WWRA. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Jeffers.
A little history, in June of '07, Victor Valley Waste Water Reclamation Authority increased the sewer rates to the city of Victorville by $1.98 per unit. Victorville, City Council, introduced a resolution and passed a resolution in January of '08 and increased our sewer rates by $1.98. It was two years ago. Two years ago. City used Article 13, Section 6 of the California Constitution as authority to vote on and hold the hearing and to pass this resolution, which was correct at that time. In July of this year, the city again held a hearing to raise our sewer rates because the VVWA raised the rates again. Now, this time, they want to raise them by $3.75 now, and another $3.73 next year, for a total of $7.48 in a two-year period. I informed the city council during the July hearing that what they were doing was unconstitutional. And the reason that it was unconstitutional was because they failed to notify the property owners correctly in accordance with the Constitution. We're here today because apparently you agreed with me. And I'm glad to hear that. Because our Constitution means a lot, and if we don't follow our Constitution, we're all doomed. The present letter that came out in August for this hearing today is also unconstitutional. The reason it is unconstitutional is because if you read the first paragraph of the letter, it states, "If you are a septic, if you are unseptic and do not have a sewer service, please disregard this notification, as you will not be affected by the potential sewer rate increase." That means the city of Victorville mailed out ballots to ineligible homeowners. Now, the city is using this disclaimer because they did indeed violate the Constitution by mailing it out to individuals that are not eligible to vote yes or no. Under Article 6, Section, I mean, under Article 13, the Section 6 of the California Constitution, any no votes will be counted as a no vote. Any non-returned ballots will be counted as a yes vote. So all those ballots that were made out, sent out to ineligible voters will be counted as yes votes. That's incorrect. Now, in addition, I would like to also point out in this mailing that they had for this hearing.
Your time is up.
Pardon me?
Your time is up.
You didn't, you let everybody else go.
You've gone over your three minutes. Sorry to let you go.
Several went 15. I would like to finish my presentation, please.
You've got five seconds.
All right. Capital upgrades is what the city says this money is for? Your California Constitution?
Please leave the podium.
Sir.
I gave you enough time. I gave you enough time. You're next.
Joe Bell. Several things about this. First of all, the VVWA is looking at doing this process of $15 million as a way of deleting chlorine from the process. And this $15 million project is to use ultraviolet light to take out the bacteria and the harmful things in the sewer system. I went to a La Haute meeting last week, and Harold Singer was there, and he stated in this meeting that he had informed the VVWA that their fees were way below what was the average in the state of California, and encouraged them to raise the fees. And after listening to the things that were said, I personally think that this major cost project is probably a red herring, just since it increased the fees. Their financial statement says that they pay 44 people, and looking at the top number of $3.3 million, that means each employee at the VVWA is receiving $76,600 plus per year as a salary. If you use the bottom figure of total personnel of 4.9 million, that means you're receiving $111,000 per person, per employee at the VVWA. Very substantial pay, and I guarantee you that most of the people who are using the VVWA are not making that kind of money. In a VVWA anti-degradation analysis expansion region wastewater treatment plant program, it states, page E1, "The state's Port of Cologne Water Quality Control Act requires that waters of the state be regulated so as to maintain the highest water quality that is reasonable." At the La Haute meeting, I asked the question, "Has there been any analysis done of the water in the river upstream from the discharge? Has there been any analysis of the water done downstream from the discharge? And if so, what is the bacterial count? What is the constituents of the water above and below? And how is our wastewater human plant affecting the water quality?" There is nothing to date done. According to Mr. Logan, this is a report that'll be coming out in about six or eight months. And I would recommend that you vote no on this, and go back to VVWA and find out what this information is. Find out from La Haute why we're doing this. Now, I understand there's a cease and desist order because at one time, there were high nitrates in the water being discharged. That has been fixed. I talked with Lloyd, what's his name? Logan Old.
Joe.
I talked with him several times.
15 seconds.
Okay. And that report is supposed to be done sometime within the next six to eight months. And I recommend you vote no until that is done and find out what's really going on.
Thank you, Joe. Jerry Laws.
That's me.
Coming up.
Hey, everyone here represents probably about 10,000 people in our community.
Sir, direct your words to the, all right? I'll direct it to you.
Yes.
All right. My name is Jerry Laws. I will give my address. Last time I gave my address, somebody came and damaged my truck. I'm glad to see that the council and the mayor has decided to have a little card kept private. First of all, Ryan, is it R-A-Y? Nice seeing you at Buck McKeon's thing, Steve Knight's thing, the Chamber of Commerce held a few months ago. It's good seeing you there. You're right. Absolutely no raise of fees of any kind. We're not even sure we're going to have a federal government left. But remember this, councilman, and Mr. Mayor, and Pro Tan Mike, nice seeing you. We may not have a federal government by this time next year, but we will have a local government, and we live in that community. And let me remind you, the local government is supposed to be the strongest, not the federal, not the county, and not the state, because that's where we live. I understand, from my understanding on my part here, a quote here on this one piece of paper I have here from you. "If there is no majority protest, the city council will then consider an ordinance to adopt the proposed fee increase." The adoption of protest fee increase would become effective the same effective date and so forth. I'm going to make it very simple. We're going through hard times, because most of the citizens in this nation haven't come to their city council, they haven't gone to their county, they haven't gone to their federal government, they haven't gone to their state. But when I called my federal government this morning and my state government, I told them no. No on everything. You get yourselves under control, and we want this city under control. Now, I think the city's done a pretty good job in some areas. I notice they're closed every other Friday, or maybe it's every Friday. Okay, that's a step in the right direction. I don't know how much we paid for this emphasis, but it's very nice. I could have lived in a Quonset hut myself, at an old jarhead. But, by the way, and one of my questions to you, Mr. Mayor, what are we owed on this still? You can answer that in a minute. Secondly, the people of this area, we were on the, I think it was, I think we're number six in the nation growing as a community, Victorville itself, not counting the outlined cities. So let's get ourselves under control, let's get the cost down, and let's realize that if something really breaks loose, and I don't want to see no red Chinese landing over here at a logistic airport, okay? We had Korea, we had Nam, and I got family overseas now. In fact, I just got a friend home from me, came home, Master Sergeant just got back in the United States Army, and for an old Marine to support an Army guy, you've got to be very darn good. Sir, you have 15 seconds? All right, 50 seconds. I gave him a big hug, and then my prayers were answered, he got home safe and sound. And secondly, no. You're right. No on any fees, no on any income taxes, and a fee is a tax, whether you like it or not. Get this community under control. If something really goes down, you're going to want to be able to have the support of your citizens to support you, okay? And now, I didn't bring your constitutions. Next time I come, I'll bring you pocket-sized constitutions in Buck McKeon's office. Thank you. Now, did I have a full three minutes? You had more than three minutes. Well, you're good. Because I'm on talk radio, I usually get five. Thank you. Is there anyone else who should you address the board?
My name is Karen Cantor, 16850 Jasmine, Victorville. We came to Victorville over 20 years ago. We built a four seniors-only apartment project. We did very good experience in Victorville. We've been happy to be here. I built it, I still own it, I still run it, and I live there. Originally, when we opened up, the city of Victorville Sanitation Department would require us every month to send them a report, how many units do you have occupied? We were billed according to the number of units that were using the city services. About 10 years later, they went to a flat fee per unit, and we protested it, and we weren't effective. We have an unprecedented occasion happening. We have a 20% vacancy factor. At no time in the 20 years-plus we've been here have we ever been affected like this. Our seniors, more so than most people who can go out and earn a living, are suffering beyond understanding. Whether or not we have those 20% of units occupied or not, we have to pay our flat fee per month. And according to the rate increase, we're, whether the units are occupied or not, we're going to have to do that also. We have a, we're maybe the little fish in the sea. We only have 232 units. And for us to pay the same as a single-family house, we average 1.2 persons per apartment unit, and most of them are women. We don't have a lot of male residents. So therefore, what you are asking me to do, and I have to pass the costs on to my renters, you're asking me to say, "You pay the same as a single-family house, even though you're only one person." And I don't mind a moderate fee increase. We know that there are costs associated. But when you're talking about giving us a fee increase over a period of two years, we are reducing our rental costs to our seniors. We are not increasing rates. We are actually reducing our rents to our people. I implore the city council to send this back, have someone put some consideration to the little guy that's out there who says, "We're not a single-family home, we don't have 4.4 people per housing unit, we have 1.2," and that's being generous. So I ask you not to approve this tonight and to send it back for analysis as to whether or not we should make it a flat fee per unit, or should we take into consideration some of us don't have.
Your time's up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other, you already, sir? She'll post that in a little bit. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing on item number four, and there were some questions. Mr. Cox, if you would like to go first.
I will try to answer those, Mr. Mayor and council. Victor Valley Waste Water Authority has been required to make corrections in regard to discharge requirements. La Haute has put requirements for them to make upgrades, capital upgrades. They have hired the consultants and made the determination of what it would take to make the regulatory capital upgrades that are required, and extrapolated that over the sewage that they receive, and that is then extrapolated over the fee schedule. The passing of the wastewater authority's increase then is automatically passed on to city Victorville, town of Alphaville, city of Hesperia, county of San Bernardino. And this fee is, in fact, a pass-through fee, and the fee does not exceed the funds that are required to pay for the related service. In other words, we cannot. In other words, we cannot charge a fee greater than what we are going to pass through to the Victor Valley, BBWRA, Victor Valley Sewer Services. The revenue derived can't be used for other purposes, can't be used for staff, and we have to make sure that we account for this, and that we actually make sure that the proposed fees will be used directly to the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority for the treatment of the sewage. That proposed fee is cannot be used and will not be used for general government, including police, fire, ambulance, or other services that the council may think that those fees are needed. If the council does not adopt the fee, then you must take funds from other funds. You must take the funds and pay the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority. You have an agreement, as a joint powers agreement with Victor Valley Wastewater Authority. All the entities, that is a signatory to the joint powers authority, must pay the bills that are sent. You can challenge the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority on whether or not they're inefficient and effective operation. You can challenge them whether or not they should be reducing employees, or if they're paying too many salaries or benefits. But the fact is that they have adopted this fee schedule, they have passed it on, and if you do not raise the fees, you have to subsidize those fees from some other—some other account. And as you noted here tonight, because of the need to borrow from the water account and the redevelopment account, you would have to borrow those funds because you do not have a reserve account, as someone reported in the newspaper. You do not have funds set aside to pay additional fees, and you do not have funds in the general fund. So if you do not pass the fee, you'll have to find the money from some other source and do a borrow to pay the fee. And if you ask me right now, where would I find the money, I don't have a clue, because I don't—they believe you have it. So that's the dilemma you're in. Now, we have raised questions about it's not fair to have multifamily residential fee the same as single-family. That may be true, that may be a very good point, that may need to be studied, but that doesn't affect the fee that's in front of you. I don't know how long it's been since there was a study in regard to the industrial fee, the commercial fee, single-family, duplex, multifamily. It may be time to look at that. There may be changing conditions that have caused those fees to be changed, but at this point in time, that's not the issue in front of you. They may be very valid issues, they need to be studied, but what is in front of you is to raise the fee, to pay the bill to the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority. That's a legitimate bill, you're required to pay it.
Thank you. There was another question on the—if the ballot was constitutional, I'll have our attorney interpret.
Yeah, the prior mailing of the notice at the July 28th meeting, I believe it was, was not properly done. The corrections, the necessary corrections were made. This notice went out to all the property owners as required by the Constitution, and the process is in compliance with the California Constitution.
If our sitter clerk will provide the information on how many letters were sent out.
Yes, and Mayor Cabrealis, just for the record, on the diash, you do have one additional letter in opposition that was received from the Apartment Association of the Greater Inland Empire, just for the record. The number of protest forms that were mailed out to property owners was 40,571. Out of those, we have received 2,162 protest forms, so there is not a majority protest.
Any questions from the council? Comment? Would you entertain a motion?
Mayor Cabrealis, I would need to read the title of the ordinance on this item. Ordinance Number 2247 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Amending Chapter 10.01 to the Victorville Municipal Code Revising the Sewer User Fees for the Use of the City Sewers.
Motion. Move away from the reading. Second.
Councilmember Almond, may I get a vote from you?
Yes, very hard to push that, yes, but we have no money to take it from anywhere.
Item number five, a presentation of request to approve the consent calendar.
Go for approval.
Item number six, request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $44,650 for additional work related to the Riverwalk project.
Move for approval.
Item number seven, request for council to, one, amend the service provider agreement, amendment number two, with Epic Land Solutions Incorporated to increase the not-to-see total amount of $280,000, and, two, extend the term of the contract until June 30, 2010, or beyond that date by mutual consent by the city and the service provider regarding the La Mesa Niscali I-15 interchange.
Move for approval.
Item number eight, request to adopt resolution number 09084 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Establishing and Adopting the Annual Appropriations Limit for the Fiscal Year 2009-2010.
Move for approval.
Item number nine, request for council to approve the purchase offer from Wheeler Caterpillar for two surplus Caterpillar Model XQ 1250 gas engine generators, and authorize the city manager or the deputy to negotiate the terms of the sale. We have completed item number 10. We'll go to item number 11. Item number 11, request to approve $35,000 to be paid to Mayor Hoffman-McKinnon, PC, for additional professional hours of time regarding the audit. Item number 12, request to award a contract to Oskos Corp. operation for the purchase of one aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle in the amount of $1,77,170, and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $6,358.50.
Move for approval.
Item 13, request, city council, to approve the city council ethics and anti-fraud policy.
Move for approval.
May I ask a question on this one?
Yes.
When was the last time we did this? Have we ever done this before?
I don't think we have one at present. That was the recommendation from the audit.
Okay.
Well, when I—when I first came here, I asked if there was a city council ethics policy. I was told that there was. There was a policy, but it wasn't adopted in this forum here. It was a policy, I think it was a management policy, but I don't believe the council had ever adopted one. We couldn't find one. We went through the record, and so we determined we needed to do it and do it correctly, and so this is—the this is the product of that.
Thank you. Very good.
Item 14, request council to approve the consultant code of ethics policy.
Move for approval. Member Almond, may I get a vote from you?
Did we do the 15 already?
In regard to the audit, I would ask that the assistant manager, the deputy manager would come forth and make a very brief introduction. We have Meyer Hoffman here, but I would ask the duck to make a brief introduction in regard to what you have in front of you and the—what the submissions are about.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. As the council's aware, about two weeks ago, you received the final 2008 fiscal year audit. This brings us up to date on audits, and I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Mike Harrison, who is a partner with Meyer Hoffman-McKinnon, who has a brief presentation to give you that will sort of outline the issues that were raised in that audit that the council needs to be aware of. I know you've all had a chance to read it, but I think we felt it wise for you to hear directly from the auditors, and then also hear a little bit about management's plans that we discussed with the auditors as to how we're going to address those issues in the future.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Mike Harrison, and I'm the partner shareholder on the audit of the City of Victorville. And I'm just going to go ahead and try to stick to the PowerPoint presentation here and see if I got it right. Background of the audit, as you know, our audit of the year ended 2000—June 30, 2008 follows the 2007 audit that was completed in March of 2009 by another CPA firm who issued a disclaimer of opinion due to inadequate internal controls here at the city. Mayor Hoffman-McKinnon was selected by city council on the 7th of May, 2009. Our audit team knew that time was of the essence, and the audit was completed on August 28th of '09, 111 days later. Mayor Hoffman-McKinnon had the same audit team available to conduct this audit that conducted the 2006 and earlier audits. Four of the key people, including myself, were involved in the 2006 audit here at the City of Victorville, so we were very familiar with a number of the issues and also a number of the people and working with a number of the—of the finance department staff here at the city. As far as the scope of the 2008 Victorville audit, we audited the basic financial statements and supplementary data of the city, except the Victorville Water District, which was audited by Charles Fedak and Company earlier during the year. We also did a re-audit of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. We performed an audit of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, also the Rail Authority, and then also performed the A-133 single audit of all federal grant funds of the city. So all of the federal monies coming in, you actually have an audit requirement that is due nine months after the end of the fiscal year, and the city was getting notices that that was not completed and so forth. So—and I'm happy to say that that actually has been all signed off electronically. The copies of the final audit report of the A-133 single audit report have been certified to by Mayor Hoffman-McKinnon and the city's assistant finance director. So that has been filed, and a couple of weeks ago, it was electronically—was submitted to the U.S. Bureau Census, so you're—you're officially back in compliance there. Our audit opinion on the financial statements of the city was unqualified. However, we do have an explanatory paragraph emphasizing that there is substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern. There is also reference to the work of other auditors on the Victorville Water District. That is in reference to that, and we did receive permission from Charles Fedak and Company to—to put that statement in there. And then there's also reference to the absence of management's discussion and analysis, which is required supplementary information. And that was left out due to the essence of time, more so than anything else, because I believe that that could be put in in the '09 audit. There were four material weaknesses that were reported to you. The first one was the need for improved communication over changes in the capital asset area. There were some real significant problems in that particular area. There was also a need for improved controls in the payroll area. And then we had quite a number of adjustments that were detected by the audit process. We consider that to be a material weakness in this year's audit. And then there also, another area that we considered to be a material weakness was the need for formal documentation and approval of long-term inter-fund borrowing. And tonight, these loans that were formalized are really somewhat of a—of a byproduct of coming back to the city council, because really, there had been negative cash balances going back a number of years in certain funds. And I could even take, let's just say, the golf course fund. If you take the golf course, the golf course has operated and really is about $5.6 million at the end of '09, has done inter-fund borrowing and had to borrow from another fund to operate that. And that's a cumulative number to operate the golf facility. And—and so that is maintained as a separate enterprise fund, but really does not have the cash to operate that, and there had been—they weren't really permanent transfers that were made to fund that out of the general fund, and so there's a big negative inter-fund balance that has accumulated over all the years for operating the golf. And the same way with SCLAA, and the same way with VEMUS. So they—they've been the borrowing funds, you might say, and really, what we had asked city management to do is to formalize that, that those are not short-term loans, they aren't just due-tos and due-froms to take out of the bank balances, they really are very permanent. And—and so it's going to take a long time to repay those loans back to the funds that are lending the money. And so if the water fund and redevelopment are lending money to VEMUS and SCLAA, or the general fund is lending money to the golf course fund, knowing who is the lending fund and who's the borrowing fund, and what is a current inter-fund borrowing and what is more long-term, and it would be considered to be more of an advance. We use the terminology of a long-term advance or a long-term note as opposed to a due-to or due-from. For example, one of the things that we talked about with—with—the city manager and the assistant city manager and finance staff, for example, is that when we looked at June 30, '09, and walking forward all of our subsequent activity, we saw that the grant funds had borrowed somewhere around $9 million worth of cash that you're sitting there having receivables on for state and federal grants, that you're putting the cash out front. And really, the city doesn't have that kind of money to lend. It's got to come from somewhere. And so even—even just the coordination between—and this gets into this—this last bullet right here, on the need for formal documentation and approval of long-term inter-fund borrowing, well, some of these things should never become long-term. You know, for example, on the grant process, even if—it—it could be shortened up by the engineering folks here at the city, working more closely with the finance staff, to try to shorten up the amount of lending that you're doing while you're waiting on intergovernmental revenue coming in from other agencies. And I think the city in years past has probably thought, well, gee, we've got the money in our pooled cash account, but—the—but the issue is, is that that money in that pooled cash account keeps shrinking all the time. And so the question of it is, is who's going to be the bank and lend the money? The choices are getting less all the time, is what I'm saying.
Before you leave that point, it's a two-part question. In your audit process, were you able to go back, or did you make any effort to go back in time to see how long that process, lack of formal documentation, has occurred? That's the first part of the question. And secondly, setting aside for a minute the grant portion, is there any prohibition on inter-fund borrowing so long? prohibition on inter-fund borrowing so long as it's properly documented?
Okay. Let me answer the first question. The airport has been consuming money from other funds for a long time, a lot of years, okay, to answer that question. So SCLAA, even when we were the auditors up here in 2006, in 2005, 2004, it was operating at a deficit, and those deficits were taking cash. And really, if you were to go back, probably back four or five years ago, we had made a recommendation when we were here to formalize the long-term portion of borrowing that the airport was making from whichever fund it was borrowing from. And then obviously, well, I don't know if that answers that first part of the question. And the second part of the question is, there are certain funds that you absolutely need to stay away from unless you've been given permission by the third parties. For example, like if you were to take Measure I monies, which are your monies that are coming in very specific for transportation-related and so forth, you have Measure I auditors that come in here into the city, and so they would be looking to see whether or not interest income has been credited to the fund, and so on and so forth. Well, if you've lent the money out of the fund, and I'm not saying you have because you haven't, but I'm just saying, when you get down to that point, that you need to make sure through a monthly monitoring of the pooled cash and investments, to make sure that if you do ever get down to that point, that you needed to borrow from a fund that was really restricted, you better make sure that you're running that by the third party and getting that, and it is an interest-bearing loan that has been approved by them. And, you know, so in any event, that's kind of the point that I'm making. And I think the formality of what is going on on some of the items that are on the agenda tonight, as far as the redevelopment agency loans, the inter-fund borrowing there, and, you know, that those are all positive things. That I believe that those are being written, are they not, Mr. Cox, that are being written to where the LEEF rate of interest is being calculated?
Yes.
So if LEEF is earning 0.9% or whatever, which is about where it is, that at least the finance department is going to have to, if that money is being borrowed from the water fund, will have to calculate the amount of interest that is lost by the water fund or by the redevelopment agency, and that'll have to be set up as a liability to those funds. Now, whenever it will ever be repaid, that's another question, okay? But at least the legality of different entities, because the redevelopment agency is a separate legal entity. And typically, the redevelopment agency is being lent money by the city as opposed to the redevelopment agency lending money back to the city. I mean, it's usually the other way around. So in any event, that, this, you know, this is a fairly serious problem, the last bullet there, on the documentation. And that's why, that's why management has come back and documented the things that really are permanent types of advances that have been, that have been made. There were four additional significant deficiencies that we had in addition to the four material weaknesses. One of them was is that we believe that there needed to be some improved documentation of compliance with debt covenants. While that is assigned to an individual within the finance department, we believe that that whole area, because of the magnitude of debt that the city and its component units have, that the documentation of compliance in that particular area needs to be very well documented and monitored, because the city has, the city and its related units have over $500 million worth of debt. And then the next bullet is the need for enhanced finance department involvement in the financial statement preparation. In the essence of time, we, we as independent auditors did almost all of the preparation of the financial statements this time around. When we were the auditors back in 2006, the process was quite a bit different. We did get a lot more participation from the finance staff, and the reason for, why we want that is, is because it becomes a significant deficiency if the finance staff doesn't take full ownership of all of the numbers. Now, we ultimately did get that done through the review process. And I mean, all of the journal entries, all of the numbers are all, were all checked by the finance manager and the assistant finance director and a number of other individuals that work in different areas in the finance staff. But again, we would prefer to have an audit that has no audit adjusting entries or very few audit adjusting entries, really. And then that, that pretty much proves that they are numbers coming out of the city as opposed to numbers coming from the auditor that are getting all adjusted and so forth. Then the next comment is the need for improved controls over monitoring of grants and grant reimbursements, and I think I just mentioned that eight or nine million dollars at June 30, 2009. One of the things that we did as part of our subsequent events review was to take a look on an unaudited basis all the way through the most current time that we had available. And for the most part, we were able to get unaudited numbers out of the city's finance staff through June of '09, and take a look at who were the borrowing funds, who was consuming cash, and who had cash, okay? Because if a fund overspends, you have a negative cash balance in the fund. And that's when we got into whether or not, is that a permanent situation, or is that just a temporary situation? And I was almost flabbergasted when I saw how much the grant funds were sitting there to where you had not collected on all these grant funds, to the tune of eight or nine million dollars around June 30, meaning that you're not managing your cash flow well, is what I'm saying. And in this particular case, you need that cash, because other funds are running out of cash. And then the next comment was the need for a citywide ethics and anti-fraud policy. That's been, that has been brought to you here tonight, and so obviously, you've already addressed that issue. We also made one additional best practice recommendation, effective July 1 of 2009. The city's going to be required to file under the, under Electronic Municipal Market Access System, which is going to be the only official repository for all of the continuing disclosures for the city and its component units' debt issues. So you've got a lot of debt issues in various component units here at the city, and effective July 1, these are all going to have to be filed electronically for all of the continuing disclosures. I want to let you know in the audit reports that we presented here to you tonight, and that you got a couple of weeks ago, actually, that there were no material weaknesses in internal control. This has to do with the federal single audit that I mentioned that we just, that we have certified to. And what I wanted to say is, is that in that single audit that went to the U.S. Bureau of Census and to all of the granting agencies that are giving money to the city of Victorville, while they see that you have financial issues as far as the explanatory paragraph, even though you received an unqualified opinion, that you have that explanatory paragraph in there, when we got into testing the federal grant programs, we were not reporting any material weaknesses specifically in those federal grant programs. So I want to let you know, that's a positive thing, that there isn't problems in the internal control over the federal monies that are coming into the city. And there was no non-compliance, which was material to the financial statements of the city and the grant programs that we tested. And we rendered an unqualified opinion on compliance with federal grant programs. And the major programs that we had to drill down extensively and test under the A-133 single audit requirements were the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Adjustance Assistance Program and the Department of Transportation Highway Planning and Construction. Other communication that you received that we're required to communicate to you under Statement on Auditing Standard Number 114, which has to do with communication with those in governance, we identified in a separate letter to you, ten areas of the audit were identified where there were significant estimates and judgments reflected in the 2008 audit. I'm not going to go through all of those. They, I did get a chance to go through a lot of them with Councilmember McEtron and Mayor Cabralis when we met with them as a part of the Finance Committee. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those, but there were ten areas where there were significant estimates and judgments. There were four areas of difficulty encountered in the 2008 audit. Again, I'm not going to go into detail in those, but they're detailed in the detailed report that were given to you. There were nine major areas of significant adjustments detected by the audit process. Even though when we came in on May 7 and started the audit, which was nearly 11 months after the end of the fiscal year, there were still a lot of adjustments that were very material to the financial statements that were made. Now, obviously, some of them had to do with the prior audit, and some of the fact that there was a disclaimer of opinion on the audit. And I think, you know, the fact that there was a disclaimer of opinion, that you probably didn't get as good of results as what you could have gotten, is what I'm saying, had you, had they had to give an opinion upon the financial statements. So there were impairment calculations that had to be revisited. There were capital asset decisions that were made that were not correct. There were a lot of things along those lines. And I think we talked about some of those when we initially met with you back in May, when we addressed some of those in a separate letter back in the, in May, when the previous firm was somewhat critical of, you know, of our 2006 audit. There were no disagreements with management in the results of the audit. We got, we had excellent attitude when we initially met with the finance department on May 7, right after you selected us. We had about 15 people from the finance staff that came in and were involved in an entrance conference that we had. Everybody had a really positive attitude about getting the city of Victorville on this audit process back on track. So we received excellent cooperation. Didn't mean we didn't hit some landmines along the way, but we definitely had everybody had a right attitude, trying to problem solve and get us to a resolution. As far as consultations with other CPA firms is an area that we have to cover in our SAS 114 communication. As you know, Charles Fedak and Company was consulted by city management regarding the audit of the Victorville Water District. This was normal consultation, and it included the merger of the Baldi Mesa Water and Victor Valley Water District into the city and issuing one separate report in 2008. So we did not re-audit that. We did accept the numbers and the work that was done that the city paid for, and so basically, that reference in our audit opinion is made to that particular audit. And we did, in fact, communicate with that CPA firm as a matter of professional protocol to make sure that we had their permission to make reference to them in the audit report. The financial condition of the city. Okay, this is where it gets tough. In 2008, the general fund of the city sustained a $10.2 million loss. When you go to the financial statements, this is what you find. The 2009 unaudited general fund loss, and again, we had the benefit of this audit being so far behind, that our subsequent events took us a full year beyond the June 30, '08 timeframe for us to look at unaudited numbers. And again, there's probably a number of accruals that are going to reduce these numbers, but the 2009 unaudited general fund loss before a $15.8 million transfer from the sanitary fund is estimated at $21.7 million. So basically, the general fund loss, and again, some of this, some of these might be, there's some fine tuning of inter-governmental revenues that had not been adjusted yet and so forth, but it's a little bit frightening to see that the, that the loss before this one-time transfer is $21 million in the general fund for the audit that is yet to be done for the year ended 2009. And I'm hoping that there's some, there's some good revenue numbers that didn't get reflected in there in those unaudited numbers. The projected general fund balance at June 30, '09, after taking these two bullets that are just up above there, is $9.2 million. So if you have a general fund balance of $9.2 million, the general fund really doesn't have any cash, is what I'm saying. That's what the last bullet is saying, because the $9.2 million amount really has been lent to the Golf Course Enterprise Fund, and the federal grants are operating at a cash deficit position to borrow that money. As I mentioned, eight or nine million dollars had to come from somewhere, and you have to make certain assumptions. Who's the bank? Who's the lending fund? We know who the borrowing funds are, but who are the lending funds? And that is something that has to be looked at and monitored to know who has cash to lend in the pooled cash and investment account. And so if you look at it and say, okay, if the general fund had $9.2 million worth of equity, it already had to lend the money to the Golf Course Fund, because the Golf Course Fund cumulatively has borrowed $5.6 million over the period of time for various reasons, whether it was capital or operating in nature, and it has an accumulated shortfall. You know, the only way to rectify that is make a permanent transfer from, you know, let's say, from the general fund, if the general fund is supporting the Golf Course Fund. But except only, really, the general fund doesn't have the equity to do that. So, and the fact that if the grant funds don't have sufficient cash, who do you look to, to lend the money while you're waiting on the feds and the state for drawing down monies for road projects and so forth that are being funded under federal grants? So those are things that all, I think the city could get a lot better at getting that cash in, you know, under those federal and state grants, so that it takes some of the burden off of these funds that really don't have sufficient liquidity in them. Okay, SCLAA. SCLAA had deficit operations that continue to occur in the Airport Enterprise Fund. The net asset deficiency at June 30, '08 was $54.6 million. This includes a loss for 2008 of $36.5 million. The estimated net loss, which is unaudited in the SCLAA fund for 2009, is estimated to be $19.9 million. Again, this is all unaudited information, but we did try to look forward that 12-month period of time, and the borrowing of the expenses that had to be paid in '09 is reflected in these inter-fund loans that you've approved tonight. So really, the fact that cash has had to be borrowed to fund activities of SCLAA or VEMUS, the money had to come from somewhere, whether it was water or redevelopment or sanitary, or, you know, that basically, the inter-fund borrowing, some of it, it has to be viewed as being more permanent, and hopefully, you'll be able to pay it at some point in the future. Subordinate, obviously, to your third-party bondholders. Financial condition of VEMUS. The Victorville Municipal Utilities, oops. The Victorville Utilities Enterprise Fund incurred a $1.9 million loss in 2008. VEMUS had a net asset deficiency of $64.3 million at the end of June of '08. The estimated unaudited net loss for June 30, '09, from the number that we're seeing unaudited, was quite a bit bigger than what it was in '08. So it looks, and again, for those people working in that particular area, maybe have a better feel for that. Again, until we get into the audit and see, we won't be able to tell that. The General Electric Purchase Contract obviously provides uncertainty over the city's continuing obligations. We, that is pretty well disclosed in the financial statements. It was in the previous audited financial statements as well, as far as the 50-plus million dollars that was recorded, and we actually have that recorded as a deposit in the financial statements. We haven't written any of that $50 million off. It's been carried as an asset that, for the deposit that you've made, having to do with the General Electric commitment. And if you were to And if you were to have to pay a termination charge from the information that we've received from city management, that that number is over $56 million. So, these are all the things that we're obligated as independent auditors to certainly disclose, and that's what is putting a shadow over the financial condition of the city and the reason why we needed to put that paragraph in our independent auditor's report, even though we have rendered an unqualified opinion, meaning that we've had no scope limitations or anything, upon the work that we've done. So, what's next? You need to make major cutbacks in spending citywide immediately. Those have been addressed. If you go to the notes to the financial statements, part of what we needed to do as independent auditors in looking at the city's viability down the line is to find out, well, what are you going to do about all this? And so, we have gone to the city manager and the assistant city manager and asked them to provide, what is the city doing about correcting the financial situation here at the city of Victorville? Because, obviously, we want to see the city of Victorville succeed. And there's just some fairly dramatic things. I know you've had some tough things to do about fees and so forth tonight. But you know what? If some tough decisions aren't made, there's going to be some significant problems here at the city. I mean, in terms of, you know, cutting expenses, enhancing revenues where possible, maintaining liquidity of unrestricted funds, monitoring cash in unrestricted funds at least monthly, avoid borrowing from restricted funds, and if you have to, make sure that you structure it with an interest-bearing note, correct the internal control and other significant, the material weaknesses and other significant deficiencies. And I think we're on the road to doing that. And submit all regulatory reports on time, county, state, and federal and debt-related types of reporting. Need to make sure that you're on top of that, and I think, again, we're headed in the right direction on that. I think the fact of getting the independent audit report out now will, you'll be able to get over a number of hurdles there. And then, keep the 2009 audit on track within 210 days of the end of the fiscal year to meet the EMA and all debt reporting and other county and state requirements. And we've had some discussion with the Finance and Audit Committee. We actually are planning on starting the preliminary and planning work for the 2009 audit will begin next month if you approve us to continue as your independent auditors. And then, we will be communicating to of the things that need to be ready for us. Those unaudited numbers are going to have to be tuned up and so forth so that we get accurate year-end accruals for both on the revenue side and on the expense side. And then, the meat of the work will be going on in November and early December and finalizing it in January with final reports promised to you by January 31st final, within that 210-day time period. And we've discussed that with the Audit Committee and with the time over the Christmas time, you know, and I know our staff, we get about 17 days out of the month of December, and then we have to finish things up after that because we've worked them so hard. But any event, staying on track in 210 days is on track. There's not a problem with that. But those are the things that we believe should be next, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question.
I know I've provided a lot of information to you, a lot of reports, and there's been a lot of effort that's gone in to the audit and getting this to you timely. But I'm happy to answer any question on any page of any report. I think I've almost got this stuff memorized.
Well, before I ask my question, just, I want to say thank you to you and your staff for really doubling down in terms of the effort to help us get the audits current.
Sure.
And although I've not received any opinions or recommendations from our two-member Finance or Audit Committee, I'm not sure what their title is, I, for one, certainly support you moving forward ASAP. My questions are broad in nature, and I'm not looking for a lot of specific detail because it's kind of an unfair series of questions. But in your audit process, did you see anything that would indicate concern in the area of embezzlement or misappropriation of funds?
The answer to that is no.
The second part of the question goes back to a question I answered or I asked a little earlier about inter-fund borrowing. And again, recognizing that there are some funds that you can't borrow from unless you have third-party approval, but setting those aside for a minute. Funds that are not restricted, assuming, again, appropriate documentation, is there any prohibition on inter-fund transfers not associated with restricted funds?
I think you're asking the question, can the Water Fund loan money to the General Fund? Can the Water Fund loan money to Vemus? Can the Redevelopment Agency loan money to SCLAA? And I think if you have a properly structured agreement and interest-bearing agreement, recognizing that it's long-term in nature, because really, what we're trying to force out is the fact that, I don't think we're, I mean, we're concerned about the grant borrowing, but if you're going to get the $9 million back, that's going to be repaid. But on SCLAA and on Vemus, the question of it is, where's the repayment going to come from? And on the Golf Course, where's the repayment's going to come from? Those are long-term inter-fund advances that you've had negative cash in there for a period of time, and they need, and as that spending went on and as it went up, it needs to come back for approval so that you know what the heck's going on. I mean, if you've approved the payment and it is, and you've had to take that and it didn't come out of, you know, a bond proceeds or anything of that nature, I mean, and it's had to come out of a rent stream. And so, I think the answer to your question is that, I think if it's properly done, now, I don't know how Measure I would feel if you went to the county and said, gee, we need to borrow part of your $15 million that we have in your pooled cash and investments, and it's really not going to be used on Measure I projects, they might have a problem with that, okay? And that's why I'm saying you need to be really careful about borrowing from gas tax monies or Measure I monies, things that are definitely very, have a very specific purpose for them. With redevelopment, I think the risk there is, is that you have debt obligations, so you need to make sure that all of your debt service payments are properly serviced before you have inter-fund borrowing, you know, to another fund on an ongoing basis, I'm saying. So, I think a lot of it takes a lot of very careful consideration. And what happens if the general fund is short as what it looks to be in 2009 and even on into 2010, and you, where is the inter-fund borrowing going to come from? You have to make that decision. And I mean, in certain cases, the decisions have already been made because you've already spent the money. I mean, you've spent the money over the last couple of years in '08 and '09, and in '07 for that matter, too, where revenues have gone down and expenses have gone up on things that have been approved by the, you know, I'm assuming, for the most part, approved for the expenditures, and the cash had to come from somewhere. And at June 30th of 2009, the city has about $75 million worth of pooled cash and investments that would be non-fiscal agent pooled. That would be money that typically is, you could get out within 24 hours. It's LEAF money. LEAF allows like $40 million per legal entity to be invested, and you've got several legal entities, so you wouldn't have a problem going over that. But basically, you've got about $75 million, and what the city has to do every month is to say, okay, which funds are negative and which ones are positive on a monthly basis, and really monitor that to know who's borrowing and is this just a short-term borrowing that's going to be paid back in the case of a grant fund? Or is it more long-term that you have to come back to the council and say, gee, 20 million wasn't enough, it should have been 25 million? Or, you know, or 10 million wasn't enough, it should have been 12? And because that's where the negative cash balances are running.
I'm assuming that in some of the bullet points that you've discussed tonight, that the recommendations in terms of internal controls more specifically address some of these procedural and process-type issues.
Right, exactly. Right, right. And I think, you know, I think there needs to be like a monthly report that Finance needs to really give back to the city manager so where he knows what, you know, what negative balances there are on certain cash funds, you know. It might just be a red flag, like, just like the, you know, I think when I talked to the city manager about the grant funds, he's indicated that over the years that really, probably the city's gotten lazy about following up on getting cash into the city. Well, this isn't the time to be lazy. This is the time to get with it.
My last question, and then I'll, I don't want to occupy all the time, but, and this is, this may be an unfair question, and if it is, I won't be offended if you decline. But you are, your firm has got a very good reputation, and you audit a lot of municipalities, which is one of the regions you were here before and one of the reasons that you're Units of government at all levels, but specifically municipalities in California, are struggling with serious cash flow problems, setting aside for a minute internal control issues which are real and need to be addressed. Is there any way to quantify an order of magnitude of our problem associated with the fact that the subventions have slowed, the gas tax revenues are not what everybody thought they were going to be, property tax revenues are down? I mean, I realize that that's a difficult question, but is there an aspect of the city's financial problems that us and others would attribute to a general decline in the economy and the resulting cash flows?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it's, absolutely. If you were to go, if you were to go, and I'll take, I'll pull out one city, I'm the partner on the city of Beverly Hills. The general fund of the city of Beverly Hills is projecting a $20 million decline in general fund revenues at the city. I'm trying to remember if that was this year in '09 or the '09-'10 year. But even, I'm just saying, all the cities are experiencing, I mean, when you, different cities are made up of different tax bases and so forth in terms of, if you go there, it might be expensive hotels, okay? Or it might be sales tax revenue on Rodeo Drive. But the point of it is, is that every city is hurting in terms of, in one fashion or another, whether it's property taxes, sales taxes, state subventions of the state trying to take away money that belongs to you and so forth. So, there's, you know, you're getting broadsided from every side, no question about it. I mean, and there are other cities that are on furlough. There are accounting firms that are on furlough, okay? So, 21 of the 24 offices in my firm are on furlough. So, I mean, it's not, ours are more short-term in the service business where, you know, it's more, if you've got seasonal situations. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of stuff going on out there, and everybody is affected by it. And so, yes, yes, the economy is dramatically affecting the city of Victorville. It wasn't all, you know, bad decisions, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for your help. Thank you for your candor, and thank you for your professionalism.
Sure. Thank you.
On the Redevelopment Agency, I think last month, we passed a date where the county gets their annual Redevelopment Agency assessments. Do you remember off the top of your head, or was it, were we positive, negative, or about even with the previous year?
No, let's see the, see if the date that I'm understanding.
Was it about August? I thought it was like the 20th or the 15th of the month or something. I thought the county comes up with their annual assessment of what the assessed valuation is for the Redevelopment.
Good question. I don't have an answer to that. Probably the finance staff might be able to give an answer.
Just an upward, was it positive, Keith, or negative, or?
It's a valuation.
Down. Twenty, Jesus, okay. That brings me to my second question, and again, this, like Terry, I'm going to say it's probably not fair to ask you, but I'm going to ask it anyway. States hitting cities Redevelopment Agencies for a set amount of money out of their budgets. I don't know, I think ours, they'd indicate about 12 million. I think our personal responsibility for Victorville would be, if we get a declining assessed valuation and we bonded out and say we've maxed out all of our money there, where do we come up with the 12 million that the state is taking from us to pay, assuming that they can legally stand up to that, I'm not sure that's going to do it, but assuming that they've done okay, and they said it's legal for you to take from the city, they're taking 12 million, and we bonded out and our assessed valuation is going down that much, we're afraid to be anyplace but negative, where do we get that money that we've already committed?
I agree. I think that you're talking about Redevelopment Agency monies that the state wants to take. And I think that there is a lot going on in that particular area in terms of, I think that there is some fight against that legally. I know that you're not the only Redevelopment Agency that has a significant amount of increment and that would be paying, you know, if they came in, and I think this has to do with more of the ERAF type of take, where they're trying to put money back in the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund up at the state. I think that's what you're talking about. But I think there is, there are a lot of Redevelopment Agencies that are trying to fight that, of the fact that they can't afford to give that money up because they have other obligations with it. So, I would suggest that you maybe look into that from a legal standpoint as to what you can do to fight off giving money out of your Redevelopment Agency to the state.
I know we won the first round in the courts, but obviously, it's probably going to go further up the court.
That's true, Mike. That'll probably come up at the League of Cities meeting, I would think, but the state tried the ERAF shift last year and was defeated in the courts. They have appealed it, but the, most of the Redevelopment Agencies in California are fighting again this year and believe, very optimistically, that we'll be successful based on the fact that we were successful the first time around, so.
All right.
Amen?
I just want to thank you very much, and thank you for your recommendations.
Yes, absolutely.
I would also like to thank you and for giving us the audit in a timely manner. It's 111 days, that's great.
We worked hard for that. We, you know, believe me, I was cracking the whip, so. And finance staff at the, you know, we really had to work closely together to make sure that what we were coming up with wasn't just complete, but it was, that it was materially correct.
And it's refreshing, even though it's a hard pill to swallow.
I know it's tough to swallow.
But it's refreshing to see exactly where you're at.
Yeah.
So, you can make those adjustments or do those things you have to do, push forward. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make the motion to receive and file.
Item 16, Superior 180th.
17, presentation of report from council members.
I have none.
I have none. We do have a closed session.
Correct. Mayor Cabralis, we need to re, resume the closed session items. I think we have three, hopefully, very, very short, quick ones, and to the extent there is any reportable action, we will come out and report that action.
Thank you for bearing with us tonight. We appreciate it.
There is no reportable action as a result of the various closed session agenda items.